Could I ask the council members to please come to the council chambers so we can get started? It's now a quarter after ten. Would the council members please come to the council chambers? Mr. Fuer, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Wax, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and Mr. Pacheco. Please come to the council chambers. Oh, Pacheco is here, thank you, I'm sorry. Find me, Nick. Can I have your attention, please? Want to flip that on? Can I have your attention, please? It appears that we're not going to have a forum today, but we are going to proceed with the presentations that we have. And so we'll start off right now. Who's here? Mr. Pacheco, we're here, you had it. Presentations. And Ms. Miskowski. Are you ready, Cindy? I think you're first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. I would like to ask Richard Druyan to come forward, please. And I would hope that some other members of the council can come down here because this is a special day. And I think it's important to have the council be introduced to and given a sense of appreciation to the Rampart Independent Panel. The group that proposed and provided a report to the Police Commission, to the Police Department, to the City Council, and did extraordinary work in a very compressed period of time. This panel comprised of, was comprised of 197 individuals who broke themselves into specific working groups and addressed issues that we on the council know very well are of concern in the department. From the eight working groups were the Officer Involved Shooting Group, Use of Force Group, the Civilian Oversight Working Group, the Risk Management Working Group, the Disciplinary System Working Group, the Operations Working Group, Rampart Personnel, and the Ethics and Culture and Communications Working Group. Those are the topics that are constantly on everyone's mind and discussion as we look at the Police Department. Issues of reform, issues of where we should make some changes, and issues of what has been working well. This, this 197 group was pulled together and under the administration of Richard Druyan, who is with me today. He was the general counsel who helped pull it together, shepherd the work. And we just had a reception a bit earlier for all of these members who were able to come today to say thank you, to give them a certificate of appreciation and recognition for the work that they did that is going to be constructive and really set the guidepost for truly deep and long-term reform of the Los Angeles Police Department. This group was independent, they had their own investigators, they analyzed their own material, they worked closely with the Inspector General and the Executive Director. Only in having those two agencies give them material, let them be the ones to independently review it, and, and work out this result, which is the report that they did provide to us in November, that the City Council is now reviewing. The Police Commission itself reviewed in two days last week all 87 recommendations, implementing some, issuing orders to implement some immediately, creating their own immediate working groups to look at the long-term recommendations, particularly those that hopefully as they come to the council will be involving issues that need to go back to the voters to let the voters constructively participate in the process of institutionally, fundamentally reasserting that this department is one that needs to have strong civilian oversight, create an aura of morale and implementation so that our Police Department can go forward with the strength that we know this city deserves and the department deserves. So I would like to introduce and thank, we're not going to call all of the people here, but I did want all of those who are here to stand to be received by the council, the members of the independent panel who are here still, thank you very much. I would also like to introduce the Inspector General Jeff Egglash and the Executive Director Joe Gunn. And I know our Commission President Jerry Chalif, I believe is still here. Earlier, we had Chief Parks and members of his department come to the reception to help express their appreciation to the working group, the independent panel. But I don't know Jeff and/or, Jeff, would you like to say something before we turn it over to Rich?
No, let's leave it.
Okay, Rick.
Thank you, Councilmember Mizakowski. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and councilmember Mizakowski for this recognition of the efforts of our panel. I know I speak on behalf of all of the members of the panel when I say that it was a great honor to have this opportunity to serve our community, to address some of the most important issues facing our community. The report is the product of the energy, the effort, the dedication of the many volunteers and investigators that we had handling this, this assignment. We very much appreciated having the opportunity. I want to give the credit to the panel members who devoted hundreds if not thousands of hours to this project. We look forward to having an opportunity to continue to work with the Police Commission and the City Council to address these very important issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry, do you want to say something?
Thank you.
We're going to have Mr. Chalif also from the Commission.
Just joining my appreciation for all that everybody did. Having been on one of these Commissions, I know how hard everybody worked. And then on behalf of the Police Commission, we've already begun to address the recommendations. We promised this Commission that they would be, one, independent, and two, that we would address each and every recommendation. We've begun that. As Councilmember Mizakowski stated, we've adopted some, we've referred some to you, and we're enacting some. So again, thank you. And the history of the Los Angeles Police Department and the city benefits from all of your work. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, also, before I make my presentation, I did want to take at the time, my time to thank each and every one of you for your commitment to the city of Los Angeles, the work you did. I wanted to be there this morning at the reception, and I couldn't because of Cool Schools program in my district. And, but we had to make that presentation at Placencia Elementary School. But again, I wanted to commend each and every one of you for the work you've done on behalf of the city. And we know it's an ongoing thing that we have to continue to work on, but rest assured that with this council member, your advice is very important. So I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there's two presentations I need to make, and they're, they're kind of related, so I'm, I'm going to start by introducing the new auxiliary bishop for, I guess, Los Angeles that was basically named auxiliary bishop by the Pope John Paul. And that's Monsignor Edward W. Clark, and he's present. Monsignor Clark is basically a scholar. He was a seminary president, and he was born in 1946, ordained in 1972 at St. John Seminary in Camarillo, California. He's currently assigned to St. John Seminary College. And his assignment took place at St. James at Redondo Beach, California, in 1972. And he was there for three years. In June of 1997, he was named prelate of honor. Now, I don't know what all these titles mean, so maybe you could share a little bit of that. But it's supposed to mean high priest. But this year, January 16, 2001, again, he was named the auxiliary bishop in the Roman Catholic Archdiocese for Los Angeles by Pope John Paul II. And we wanted to congratulate him on that recognition, as well as as bishop of Our Lady of Angels, Pastoral Region, and welcome you. And it's not only signed by myself, but all 15 of my colleagues. And if you noticed today, we don't have all 15 of us present. So when we get all 15 signatures, it's a real special thing. And this is, again, a certificate of congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Councilman Hernandez and members of the City Council. My appointment as auxiliary bishop to Los Angeles also includes an appointment as the regional bishop for Lady of the Angels region, which encompasses the center city of Los Angeles down to the ocean at Santa Monica. A large part of the city then falls within the region that I will be working with during the years ahead. There's an historic relationship between the archdiocese of Los Angeles and the city, and especially city government. And my predecessors as bishops in this region, Bishop John Ward, Bishop Stephen Blair, had a wonderful relationship with the city of Los Angeles and the good work that went on in order to help the citizenry and the members of both the, living in the city of Los Angeles who are members of the wider city community and also members of the church. So I want to thank the City Council today for this proclamation as congratulations on my appointment. I look forward to, in the years ahead, to working with the city in order to bring about a better life for all of the people here in the Los Angeles area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I have a little more recognition, knowledge of this next individual we're going to be congratulating. And he also was appointed a bishop, and that's Monsignor Dennis P. O'Neill, who was born in 1940 in Fremont, Nebraska, and ordained in 1966, also at St. John Seminary in Camarillo. He was just recently appointed on his 61st birthday to serve as auxiliary bishop in the neighboring, neighboring diocese of San Bernardino. And I know Monsignor Dennis O'Neill as Father O'Neill when he was the, basically, the pastor at St. Thomas Apostle in my district. And we all know there's a tremendous effort going on to rebuild that church after its fire. But Father O'Neill basically was part of that community and worked hand-in-hand with some of the other churches in the area in the creation of the Byzantine Latino Quarter and pretty much bringing back a good, a positive spirit. But the community always was thankful of the church and the work that the church did and the support they received by the church. And a lot of that was because of the leadership of Father O'Neill. He's currently the pastor at St. Midas Church in Lindwood. And again, he was formerly the pastor for 13 years at St. Thomas Apostle Parish in Pico Union. His first assignment was at St. Joseph's in Placencia. That was back in 1966, and he stayed there for four years. In 1995, he was also named prelate of honor, which again means high priest. And I would like to congratulate Dennis P. O'Neill for his commitment and his new appointment as auxiliary bishop in San Bernardino. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hernandez. And it is with a certain sorrow that I will be going away to the neighboring diocese. I had my most enjoyable times here in Los Angeles, and especially our work in the Byzantine Latino Quarter and our work with Councilman Hernandez in this council. It was a wonderful time, and now I hope to go and do some of the same in our inland empire area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski for a presentation.
Oh, you did it. Mr. Pacheco.
Go, Barney, Mr. President, colleagues. Is today, I guess today-
...that hopefully as they come to the council will be involving issues that need to go back to the voters, to let the voters constructively participate in the process of institutionally, fundamentally reasserting that this department is one that needs to have strong civilian oversight, create an aura of morale and implementation so that our police department can go forward with the strength that we know this city deserves and the department deserves. So I would like to introduce and thank, we're not going to call all of the people here, but I did want all of those who are here to stand to be received by the council, the members of the independent panel who are here still, thank you very much. I would also like to introduce the Inspector General Jeff Egglash and the Executive Director Joe Gunn, and I know our Commission President Jerry Treilof, I believe, is still here. Earlier, we had Chief Parks and members of his department come to the reception to help express their appreciation to the working group, the independent panel. But I don't know Jeff, and/or Jeff, would you like to say something before we turn it over to Rich?
No, let's leave it to Rich.
Okay, Rich.
Thank you, Councilmember Mizakowski. First of all, I'd like to thank the Council and Councilmember Mizakowski for this recognition of the efforts of our panel. I know I speak on behalf of all of the members of the panel when I say that it was a great honor to have this opportunity to serve our community, to address some of the most important issues facing our community. The report is the product of the energy, the effort, the dedication of the many volunteers and investigators that we had handling this assignment. We very much appreciated having the opportunity. I want to give the credit to the panel members who devoted hundreds, if not thousands, of hours to this project. We look forward to having an opportunity to continue to work with the Police Commission and the City Council to address these very important issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jerry, do you want to say something?
Thank you.
We're going to have Mr. Treilof also from the Commission.
Just joining my appreciation for all that everybody did, having been on one of these commissions, I know how hard everybody worked. And then, on behalf of the Police Commission, we've already begun to address the recommendations we promised this commission, that they would be, one, independent, and, two, that we would address each and every recommendation. We've begun that. As Councilmember Mizakowski stated, we've adopted some, we've referred some to you, and we're enacting some. So again, thank you, and the history of the Los Angeles Police Department and the city benefits from all of your work. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, also, before I make my presentation, I did want to take at the time, my time, to thank each and every one of you for your commitment to the city of Los Angeles, the work you did. I wanted to be there this morning at the reception, and I couldn't because of Cool Schools program in my district, but we had to make that presentation at Placencia Elementary School. But again, I wanted to commend each and every one of you for the work you've done on behalf of the city, and we know it's an ongoing thing that we have to continue to work on. But rest assured that with this council member, your advice is very important, so I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there's two presentations I need to make, and they're kind of related, so I'm going to start by introducing the new auxiliary bishop for, I guess, Los Angeles that was basically named auxiliary bishop by the Pope John Paul, and that's Monsignor Edward W. Clark, and he's present. Monsignor Clark is basically a scholar, he was a seminary president, and he was born in 1946, ordained in 1972 at St. John Seminary in Camarillo, California. He's currently assigned to St. John Seminary College, and his assignment took place at St. James at Redondo Beach, California, in 1972, and he was there for three years. In June of 1997, he was named prelate of honor. Now, I don't know what all these titles mean, so maybe you could share a little bit of that, but it's supposed to mean high priest. But this year, January 16, 2001, again, he was named auxiliary bishop in the Roman Catholic Archdiocese for Los Angeles by Pope John Paul II, and we wanted to congratulate him on that recognition, as well as bishop of Our Lady of Angels, Pastore Region, and welcome you. And it's not only signed by myself, but all 15 of my colleagues, and if you notice today, we don't have all 15 of us present, so when we get all 15 signatures, it's a real special thing, and this is, again, a certificate of congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Councilman Hernandez and members of the City Council. My appointment as auxiliary bishop to Los Angeles also includes an appointment as the regional bishop for Lady of the Angels region, which encompasses the center city of Los Angeles down to the ocean at Santa Monica. A large part of the city then falls within the region that I will be working with during the years ahead. There's an historic relationship between the Archdiocese of Los Angeles and the city, and especially city government, and my predecessors as bishops in this region, Bishop John Ward, Bishop Stephen Blair, had a wonderful relationship with the city of Los Angeles and the good work that went on in order to help the citizenry and the members of both the, living in the city of Los Angeles, who are members of the wider city community, and also members of the church. So I want to thank the City Council today for this proclamation as congratulations on my appointment. I look forward to, in the years ahead, to working with the city in order to bring about a better life for all of the people here in the Los Angeles area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I have a little more knowledge of this next individual we're going to be congratulating, and he also was appointed a bishop, and that's Monsignor Dennis P. O'Neal, who was born in 1940 in Fremont, Nebraska, and ordained in 1966, also at St. John Seminary in Camarillo. He was just recently appointed on his 61st birthday to serve as auxiliary bishop in the neighboring diocese of San Bernardino. And I know Monsignor Dennis O'Neal as Father O'Neal, when he was basically the pastor at St. Thomas Apostle in my district, and we all know there's a tremendous effort going on to rebuild that church after its fire. But Father O'Neal basically was part of that community and worked hand-in-hand with some of the other churches in the area in the creation of the Byzantine Latino Quarter and pretty much bringing back a positive spirit. But the community always was thankful of the church and the work that the church did and the support they received by the church, and a lot of that was because of the leadership of Father O'Neal. He's currently the pastor at St. Midas Church in Lindwood, and again, he was formerly the pastor for 13 years at St. Thomas Apostle Parish in Pico Union. His first assignment was at St. Joseph's in Placencia, that was back in 1966, and he stayed there for four years. In 1995, he was also named prelate of honor, which again means high priest, and I would like to congratulate Dennis P. O'Neal for his commitment and his new appointment as auxiliary bishop in San Bernardino. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hernandez, and it is with a certain sorrow that I will be going away to the neighboring diocese. I had my most enjoyable times here in Los Angeles, and especially our work in the Byzantine Latino Quarter and our work with Councilman Hernandez in this council. It was a wonderful time, and now I hope to go and do some of the same in our inland empire area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Ms. Mizakowski for a presentation. Oh, you did it. Mr. Pacheco.
Is today, I guess today is the day where us Catholics bring out all of the troops. Today, we're also celebrating and recognizing a great service that the Catholic Church provides. In 1996, Cardinal Roger Mahoney founded the, or began the ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics. The ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics depends on parishes declaring themselves open and receptive to gays and lesbians, who are welcome to participate fully in the worship and ministry of the parish community. The ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics has also established four patron support groups, of which one is Spanish-speaking and believes that parents are a critical support group for lesbians and gays. The ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics is located in the Chantry Office, just down the hall from Cardinal Roger Mahoney, thus sending the message to all that this ministry is at the very center of the church, of the Catholic Church here in Los Angeles. The ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics makes every effort to assist the community by offering services to the lesbian and gay community, such as counseling, spiritual guidance, and provides an educational program to both the clergy and laity of the Archdiocese. Father Pierre Luizio, Luizzi?
Liutzi.
Liutzi. See, I need to be more Italian. Where's my chief of staff? Who has led the ministry for the past 11 years and who has just written a book with listening hearts, understanding the voices of lesbian and gay Catholics, is here with us. On behalf, Father, and I know we have Richard Saldivar coming up, Richard, we have some other individuals that Richard will introduce right now. We have Marge also, who works with Father. But Father, it is with pleasure and pride, as a Catholic, that I now present you and read, "Therefore be resolved that the Los Angeles City Council highly commends the ministry with lesbian and gay Catholics on their 15th anniversary and honor Father Pierre Luizzi." Luizzi?
Liutzi.
Liutzi. For their dedication to humanity and for furthering the cause of reconciliation and justice and preserving the dignity of the human spirit to the gay and lesbian Catholic community.
Thank you very much.
Counselman Pacheco and all members of the City Council, it really is, I'm deeply honored today to receive this award. I also receive it on behalf of Cardinal Mahoney, because in 1986, he established this ministry, something that I know is very, very dear and important to him. Also, standing at my left is Marge Mayer, who is my administrative assistant, a mother with five sons, one of whom is gay, and she's very much a part, and a very important part, because I think in regards to this question, parents probably are the voices that need to be heard and are the hardest voices to ignore. In sum, I think my excitement today is to let everyone know that it's not a secret that our church, our Roman Catholic Church, really is in the midst of a tremendous struggle to be, first of all, to understand the very complicated reality of homosexuality, but also to accept and embrace all those members of our church that do experience this as their orientation. Thank you very, very much.
I also want to give Richard Saldivar an opportunity, one of our leaders here in the community with the wall, Las Memorias, here in Los Angeles, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman. I just wanted to tell you how important it was, and thank you so much for the presentation to the ministry. I want to take this opportunity to introduce some other people from our organization, Ariel Rivera, who is doing work within the communities of faith, educating churches about HIV and AIDS, Reese Thompson, who's a board member and a leader in the Anglican Church, and Alvaro Cantu, who's from the St. Dominic's Parish in Eagle Rock. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, Councilman Nick Pacheco.
Thank you. Cindy, would you mind, Cindy, would you mind taking the chair for a moment, and I'll make my presentations? Thank you. Alan, do you want to come also? Why don't you bring your wife up, too? Your wife's here, right? Your wife is here?
No.
Oh, she isn't?
I think so.
Okay, not your daughter? Your niece?
I think so.
Okay. We got to get this thing fixed. Members of the council, I'm not going to read all the wheresses in here, but I think that it's important that we do recognize some of the things that Al has done through the years. I'll start out by just telling you that he started his career with the city in 1959, and he was appointed by the Board of Commissioners of Architectural Coordinator the department's $39,500,000 bond in 1962. He was promoted to Architectural Associate in '65. In '68, he promoted to Planning Officer in Department of Recreation and Parks. His expertise, and I'm not going to go into all this because there's just too much here, but I can tell you that through these years, anytime our office, or virtually every, any council office, had a problem, Al was the person they went to, because Al was the problem solver. Al found a way to make things work that everybody said, "You can't do this, it doesn't work, forget it," you know, and Al would work it out and make everything work out the right way. He's responsible for a lot of the parks that we have in our district. He was extremely involved in our acquisition of the property adjacent to Stony Point, which required a land swap and involvement with the Santa Monica Mountain Conservancy, and as such, we managed to preserve 56 acres right next to Stony Point. And this is just one thing, we've had, I don't know how many, but through the years, and how many years is it altogether now, Al?
Forty-three.
Forty-three years, okay? So we're going to sadly miss Al, his expertise, but more important, his willingness to try to be helpful, to try to help council members, to try to help the community, to try to make our community be a better place for recreation and parks. And Al, I want to present this to you, but first, I think Alan would like to make a couple remarks also. Okay, Alan?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman. It's hard to know where to begin. Al has made incredible contributions to the Department of Recreation and Parks and to the community through his efforts in his 43 years in the department. He leaves a big gap for us to try and fill. He's played a very unique role, and it's been incredibly invaluable, and we will all miss his contributions and his effectiveness throughout that period, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
Al, why don't you say a few words before I present this to you, okay? Well, I'll present it to you first. Want to take a picture of this? We'll get you back afterwards.
Yes, let me. Let me come on this side.
Al, while you're also presenting that, Mr. Hernandez, I'll recognize.
Okay.
Councilman Hernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also convey a congratulations to Mr. Carmichael from Tom Labange, but Tom wanted, this morning, made it a special point to let me know that you would be here today. And I also wanted to address, I met Mr. Carmichael when I first came in the council, and we met at a meeting in Pico Union, and you need to understand that I was asking him to explain to me a little bit about the Department of Parks and Recreation, why it was that they operated the way they did, and he was very stern in his response.
Straightened you out, right?
Pretty quick. And he understood the charter, and he might not know this, but I clearly understand why it is that the charter has given parks a special place, and it's because parks are special places. And a lot of times, we as politicians want to influence their use and how they're used. And again, Mr. Carmichael was very stern, and at the same time, I found him in subsequent meetings, very understanding, because he was committed to the park system in the city of Los Angeles, and I just wanted to say that. But I also thought it was a special tribute when Tom Labange made it a point to let me know he'd be here this morning, and he wanted to make sure he was recognized, because I also know Tom's heart in regards to our parks, and I just wanted to give you that recognition, Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to all the council people, particularly Al Burnson, who's been a personal friend of mine over the years, for your help and consideration, and without your help, I don't think I could have made these 40-plus years. Like I said to another group, I've worked with four mayors, six general managers of the department, and a number of council people, so I think it's time to move on. So again, thank you all for your help and kind consideration.
Thank you very much, Al, and thank you for the parks.
Al came to the city when this was part of the Spanish land grant. Okay, next is the Amateur Athletic Foundation, and I wonder if I could have Jose Morellos and Terry Sullivan, please come forward. This presentation is on behalf of Mr. Ferraro, and this is to the Amateur Athletic Foundation. The mission of the Amateur Athletic Foundation is to serve youth through the sport, to increase the knowledge of sport and its impact on people's lives, and to develop youth sport with special focus on providing sports services and opportunities to underserved youth populations. Whereas the Amateur Athletic Foundation is endowed with surplus funds from the 1984 Los Angeles Olympic Games, the Amateur Athletic Foundation awards grants to youth sports organizations within Southern California. The Amateur Athletic Foundation recently granted $741,280 for field lighting and other field improvements at the John Ferraro Soccer Fields in Griffith Park. These field improvements will provide training and competition opportunities in soccer to an additional 300 youth per day, enhancing the safety, availability, and enjoyment of these fields for the youth of today and generations to come. Now therefore be resolved that the Los Angeles City Council thanks and commends the Amateur Athletic Foundation for its record of community service and continued dedication to the young people of Los Angeles. So I'd like to, Alan, you want to say a couple of words? I'm going to present this to you now first, anyway. Just grab a hold of that. Okay?
It's my pleasure this morning to say a few words about the Amateur Athletic Foundation. AAF has been an incredibly important partner in the provision of recreation and park services here in the city of Los Angeles. They have helped us in countless ways reach more young people and provide active recreational opportunities to learn, to grow, to train. AAF has been a partner with us in a very big way in the city aquatics program and has been a major player in stepping to the table and helping to fund, for example, the new Epic project, and their extraordinary effort in support in enabling it, enabling us to move forward on the project to light the Ferraro Soccer Fields and provide other improvements there will make a significant difference in our ability to provide more opportunities for youth soccer in the city of Los Angeles. And on behalf of the entire department and mostly the young people who'll have a chance to take advantage of these improvements, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. On behalf of the Amateur Athletic Foundation, it's, we're very, we're very thankful for this recognition. We're reminded about the Olympic Games as we walk into the council chambers, there's memorabilia about the '84 Games. We were very fortunate with the very successful 1984 Olympic Games. The Amateur Athletic Foundation has reinvested $100 million back into Southern California for its youth, and we're especially proud of our collaboration with the city of Los Angeles and with the Department of Recreation and Parks, and for all the unsung heroes in that department, we wish to thank them, because without them, we couldn't do what we're doing today. So thank you.
Okay, congratulations to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
One more, last but not least. Mike Thompson, Mike, where are you? Come on up here. You know, Mike Thompson just looks young, but he's been around here for a long time. He's been around here for nearly 32 years. In fact, when I first ran for office, he lived in my district, and I remember knocking on his door. He was working for Mayor Bradley, I think it was, that time. Or was it Bowrun?
That was Bradley.
It was Bradley, okay. Mike began his public career 32 years ago as a management analyst in the LA Police Department. In 1975, he moved to the mayor's Criminal Justice Planning Office as a deputy director. His responsibilities included management of the internal finances, administrative, and personnel operations. In 1994, Mike was selected by Mayor Reardon to be the director of Criminal Justice Planning Office. As director, he secured more than $400 million in grant funds for the purpose of increasing the number of police officers in the department and the additional resources needed to help prevent violence in our city. During his tenure, he developed a model anti-gang program involving innovative collaboration of police, sheriff, probation department, prosecution, and community-based organizations. Michael did not limit his community involvement to his career activities, he was also involved with several community organizations, including Granada Hills Youth Recreation Center, North Valley Counseling Center, California State University of Northridge, Athletic Association, and North Hills J.C.'s. And one thing that hasn't been mentioned in here, Mike is chair of the 12th District Recreation and Parks Committee, our Citizens Advisory Committee, which I don't know why they left that out, it's probably the most important thing of all, right? And has been for how many years, about 20 years or more?
Close.
Close. Okay, where were we here? Okay. Mike also has been sought out to participate as a presenter or panelist for the National Criminal Justice Association, National Institute of Justice, Judicial Council of California, UCLA Anderson School of Management, Boston University School of Public Health. On February 2, 2001, today, Mike will formally end his long and distinguished career with the City of Angels. Now therefore be resolved that by adoption of this resolution, the Los Angeles City Council thanks Michael F. Thompson for his many years of dedicated service to the people of Los Angeles, wishing him great health, happiness, and success in all his future endeavors. And while we're letting go of him here at the city, we're not letting go of him at the community, where he continues to be very active. Mike, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, Al. It's a little bit weird being here without being in the hot seat, but after 32 years, I guess I can do that.
You don't have to worry about that anymore.
Right. And of my 32 years, I spent 26 in the executive branch, and I'm looking forward to moving over to the legislative branch for a bit before I finally hang it up. I'd like to thank just a few people who have meant a lot to me during my 26 years here, and starting with former Mayor Bradley and federal Judge Terry Hatter and Rose Ochi, who brought me into the mayor's office and got me started in what I'm doing now, and certainly Mayor Dick Reardon, who appointed me to the position seven and a half years ago, and Kelly Martin, Jennifer Roth, and Bill Vialanti, who have supported me during that time. And I couldn't leave without saying thank you to this council, because I know that I've been through here more than most folks do with all our grants and things, and especially those members that I've dealt with a lot, Councilmember Hernandez, Ridley Thomas, Fuer, Chick, Mizakowski, and others, it's been, it's been really appreciated. And also certainly Councilman Burnson, who has let me serve on as community advisory council, which would be a wonderful example for the Department Neighborhood Department to follow in terms of their neighborhood councils. I think it's a great opportunity for community involvement. From the Police Department, certainly Bernard Parks, Bill Moran, and Joe Benino, who were my office mates 32 years ago, Dan Kaney, who I work with a lot, Jim Hahn, City Attorney, Marty Varanacar, Mary Claire Malador, Maureen Segal, and I'd also like to acknowledge my staff who have, on occasion, made me look good, on probably more than one occasion, Donna Oda, Nadine Shmoji, Rhonda Gaston, Teddy Fernandez, Kimberly Hee, my right hand, Kathleen O'Leary-Lefferman, and my other right hand, Mitchie Maticop, who just all have really done a great job for me during the last seven and a half years. And finally- And finally, I'd like to acknowledge my partner, my wife Sally, who makes everything happen. Sally? And again, members, thank you very much for all your consideration during these years.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for shepherding the money that came to L.A., Los Angeles, for the Los Angeles Police Department. It was masterful. We have a lot more police officers on the street today because of the work done by your office in criminal justice.
I might add, Sally's probably responsible for most of his successes. Sally's been extremely active in youth activities through our community and many other things, and both of them have been just tremendous in our, in our district. The 12th District has really benefited from having this couple, as well as the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you leave, Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Fuer. Mr. Fuer?
Thank you, Madam President.
Mike?
Mr. Thompson? Tell Butcher to wait for a second. No, I, he's not waiting, because I know where the power really lies here. I just wanted to say, Mike, you know, we've had the opportunity to work together on a number of very important issues in the city relating to public safety, the most recent of which is the community court project, but there have been many others before that. And you've always been extremely hardworking, very diligent, straight-up, and prepared to think creatively, and proposing good new ideas on ideas that are already on the table. You've added a great deal of value to all the work in the city, and Senator Alacone is extremely fortunate to be able to have you in his office, as we have been fortunate to have you work here in City Hall. Good luck, we look forward to continuing that relationship, not stopping it.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah, and I guess this is a story of the mics here. I don't know what you're doing in there, Hal.
Running the show.
You know, I wanted to bring some special attention and recognition to Mike Thompson, because, you know, we worked on a project after the civil unrest that was ultimately titled Communities Participating in Reconstruction, CPR. And that entailed being able to bring additional resources for purposes of rehabbing a community, and not so much in terms of weed and seed, but more in terms of seed and less in terms of weed. And when we talked about those terms, it was how is it that you can be more preventive of the kinds of negative activity that go on in communities? And Mike worked with us in developing that program and making sure how we disseminated that funding, and it was very community participation intense. But I also wanted to point out that I had a tragedy in our, my district that we all understood, and it was the killing of Stephanie Kewett, a three-year-old. And after that young child was killed, and the President of the United States had mentioned her killing in his speech, there was a whole task force put together by this council and the mayor's office, and the district attorneys, and the sheriff's office, and we clearly understood there was some grant monies out there that we had to apply for. But it was working with Mike Thompson that the whole concept of CLEAR came about. Working in our office, and we sat down, and a lot of people worked on that application, and the fact that CLEAR is operating it so successfully now, and all these agencies working together with a strong community participation, there are a lot of credit has to go to Mike Thompson. I kept on talking about we needed a program that had some longevity, a program that stood in a community and not just showed up and then left. And Mike has made that happen, as well as continued to work on the expansion of that program. I just wanted to kind of give some stories behind your work, because I know that the Northeast community definitely appreciates CLEAR and the work it's been doing, and it's definitely made a difference. People don't talk about the bullets shots at night now, and they talk about the murals. So again, I wanted to thank you for that, Mike.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Madam President, members of the council, those who know and love music understand and agree with the assertion that jazz is America's singular and most important contribution to world music traditions. And what an extraordinary contribution it has been. Over its long history, jazz's transcendent rhythms and its ecstatic improvisations have healed many wounds, released many bound spirits, and has served to remind us of one of the essential truths, namely that we, you and me, all of us belong to the same human family. Jazz has been and continues to be a vehicle for dissolving the manifold differences and distinctions that we contrive to keep ourselves separated and in our respective bunkers. And so, in many parts of the world, Africa, Latin America, Asia, Europe, it doesn't matter where, if you want to stop a fight, or if you want to end a war, play some jazz and let your soul be free. Those who love music also understand and agree with the assertion that jazz is one of the many gifts offered to all Americans by those who are of African descent living in this country. It is right and proper for us then to recognize and celebrate a titan in the international world of jazz during Black History Month in this year, 2001, a legend in his own right. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience and members of the City Council, I'm pleased to have with us today and to present to you Mr. Farrell Sanders. By your applause, you already know and recognize that Farrell Sanders achieved international recognition as a sax master when he exploded onto the jazz scene during his tenure with the one and only John Coltrane from 1964 to 1967. If you have heard Ascension, Meditations, or Cosmic Music, you know Farrell Sanders. The innovative music they played left such a commanding impression that nearly 30 years after the fact, many critics still think of Farrell Sanders as that screaming tenor bent on ravaging all manner of musical convention. The truth, of course, is far more textured. Farrell Sanders' creativity encompasses a wide range of musical expression. His post-Coltrane recordings over the past 30 years bear witness to a deeply passionate, scrupulously disciplined, and extraordinarily inspired master of the tenor saxophone. The one word that best captures the complexity and nuances of the man and his music is majestic. Remember, journey to one, rejoice. Heart is a melody, and crescent with love, all of these testify to his mastery and his majesty. So today, Mr. Sanders, I'm honored on behalf of the entirety of the Los Angeles City Council to present you with a resolution. And this resolution essentially memorializes your great work. It essentially says that it is by adoption of this resolution that the Los Angeles City Council does hereby recognize you, Farrell Sanders, for your outstanding accomplishments and invaluable contributions to the world of modern jazz, and we extend to you all of our best wishes for continued success and helping us to let our souls be free, Farrell Sanders.
All right, have a word.
Thank you so much to the Los Angeles City Council, and for this opportunity, and thanks to Mark Ridley Thomas, Councilman, and all the other members of the council, and thanks to, my wife and I like to feel like that we're glad to be here and to accept this token and award, and we just like to say thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Appreciate it. Come around and meet some of the members.
Thank you. For the second and last time, I recognize Mr. Pacheco.
You mean last time for today, right?
It's probably the last time I'll ever sit up here.
Colleagues, as you know, on January 16th of this year, this council passed a motion offering assistance to the country of El Salvador and those individuals here in the city of Los Angeles who are assisting those suffering in El Salvador. Councilman Padilla introduced that motion, allowing the city's emergency preparedness department to make themselves available, allowing the information technology agency to make themselves available with support and services. I have with me Carlos Vaquerrano and Carlos Ardon and Anna Day. We traveled to El Salvador to do a reconnaissance on what was going on and what assistance they would need. Before we go into the verbal report, I do want to also introduce Yvette Fernandez, who's here with us from, she's a freelance reporter who was covering the issue for Channel 11. But let me first queue up a video and show you a little segment that Ms. Fernandez did for Channel 11 on what was going on in El Salvador. So let's first roll the video, and then we'll get to Ms. Day, our division chief.
Christine, as different as our two countries are, El Salvador and the U.S., relief workers and quake experts say there is still plenty we can learn from what's happening there right now. Because you see, we both share the constant threat of a major quake and the challenge of responding when one hits. This is Encampamento Cafetalón, former soccer fields in the city of Santa Tecla, now serving as a refugee camp for some 12,000 people who have lost their homes. According to the experts, a major earthquake of this magnitude or higher in L.A. is inevitable. And while our resources may be more abundant, the issues will be the same.
Managing a refugee camp of 12,000 people is difficult. Hygiene is a major problem.
While we were there, authorities were fighting an outbreak of cholera, spread by unsanitary conditions and a lack of clean water. This little boy drinking water suitable only for bathing. And what happens to the food supply when there's no electricity to keep food fresh and no transportation system to move it to where it's needed? People from around the world have sent help, but more than 10 days after the quake, communities lacking food still aren't getting what they need to survive. And the challenge of cleaning up is simply overwhelming, especially when there is so little left. The massive landslide in Las Colinas consumed an entire neighborhood, killing more than 500 people. In the midst of all this rubble and destruction, there's a flurry of activity here, from the military cleaning up the area, to a team of international geologists and seismologists trying to figure out exactly what happened here. And the presence of those people wearing the orange jumpsuits tells us they are still unearthing cadavers. The city of L.A. has people here, too. Anna Day is with the city's emergency preparedness department. How much can we really learn from the United States, from a country, a third-world country like this?
Well, we can't say the extent of damage is going to occur in Los Angeles, simply because of building codes, the type of system and infrastructure that we have, but the people's response to disaster will be similar.
A common response to disaster is to leave. The likely destination, the Southland.
There's a very good chance that a lot of people are going to come to Los Angeles. That's where the largest population of El Salvadorans reside outside of El Salvador.
These are people that are not even used to working in the service industry. They used to pick coffee. What are they going to do in L.A.?
That's why this California delegation is here, to help the Salvadoran people get back on their feet. It's an especially personal mission for Salvadoran-American state senator Liz Figueroa and L.A. City Councilmember Nick Pacheco.
I look at the kids, I look at the parents, I look at the young mothers who are taking care of the children. I see a lot of my family, I see a lot of my basic grandparents in my background, so for me, it's a real connection with another community.
A community that lost everything but its faith.
This fills me with anguish and sadness. The United States is a country blessed by God. Couldn't we receive some of that blessing?
If you'd like to help ASOSAL, the Association of Salvadorans of California, it's taking cash donations, you can call them at 213-483-1244, or you can get more information at our website, fox11la.com. City Councilman Nick Pacheco has drafted a resolution calling on the federal government to assist Salvadorans in this country who want to return home to help their families without losing their legal status. That comes up for a vote this Wednesday. Christine?
Colleagues, as you know, because of the circumstances with the untimely death of Ms. Josera's mother, we did not introduce that motion on Wednesday. We do have motions on your desk, one dealing with the temporary protective status for Salvadoran nationals residing in the United States. That is the motion being referenced by Ms. Fernandez, which will basically give them an opportunity to not only assist their country, but also retain their goal of being a citizen of this country. We also have a motion introduced by, all three motions are introduced by myself, Councilman Padilla, and Councilmember Hernandez, assisting people with their housing needs, because housing is such a critical issue in El Salvador for rebuilding. And finally, we have a motion asking that our current council policy be waived for 30 days in terms of requesting surplus vehicles and any other type of assistance that the general services department can provide, any sort of salvage that we have in this country that we can send to El Salvador. Those are on your desk, we will vote on them Tuesday, but let me introduce Anna Day, who you got a glimpse of, to give you a brief synopsis of what she observed as a representative from the emergency preparedness department. And I did tell the general manager how great she was at El Salvador and doing her work. So, Anna, let me give you the microphone for a quick second.
Yes, good morning, members of council. I would first like to thank ASOSAL and SALF for allowing our department to travel to El Salvador and witness firsthand some of the damage and destruction that they, their city had for this earthquake. We visited roughly seven cities. San Salvador, the capital city, was the first of what we witnessed, and there was extensive damage to structures, both residential and business. Debris removal, which we had experienced with the Northridge earthquake, is a large issue that they're dealing with, simply because they don't have the large equipment that we have in Los Angeles, and they're going through what we went through slowly and meticulously as they try and continue their lives. We were offered the ability to travel to some of the outlying areas, not just the landslide, Las Colinas that you saw, that provided probably the most visible and destructive damage with all the deaths for those poor families. But we, in the outskirts areas, we saw not as high number of deaths, but an extensive amount of damage. The building in the rural areas is not as high codes as we saw in some of the larger cities, which because of that, the smaller towns sustained extensive damage. The report before you today outlines all the details of what we saw, the damage in the small towns, the large towns, where we traveled, and some of what we saw. Additionally, attached to your report today is the report that we received from Rose Letkins, the ambassador, the U.S. Ambassador in Salvador, San Salvador, and she outlines exactly what the U.S. Aid Office of Foreign Disaster has provided in terms of the helicopters, the food, the other support, as well as what ASOSAL and SALF is doing here in Los Angeles, and returning back to San Salvador for their support. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Thank you, Anna. Just for your own reference, you do have the report in front of you on your desk, it's a very thorough report done by Ms. Day. I do want to make one observation, that one of the outlying communities we traveled to had approximately 1,400 to 1,500 homes, and when we visited the site, roughly 10 of the homes were left remaining, so basically 1,300 to 1,400 homes were demolished during the earthquake. And the sort of interesting notation is that, in that community, only three individuals passed away during the earthquake, although there was such devastation of their homes. So let me bring up Carlos Vaquerrano from SALF, the Salvadoran-American Leadership and Education from, and Carlos Ardon from ASOSAL, Association of Salvadorians in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Pacheco. Good morning, honorable members of the City Council of Los Angeles. My name is Carlos Vaquerrano, I'm the executive director of SALF. I want to take this opportunity to thank you all for your continued support for the victims of the earthquake in El Salvador. I want to particularly recognize the leadership role of council members Mike Hernandez, Nick... I want to particularly recognize the leadership role of council members Mike Hernandez, Nick Pacheco, and Alex Padilla. As you all know, Councilmember Nick Pacheco and Ms. Anna Day from the emergency preparedness department of Los Angeles joined SALF and ASOSAL when they took to El Salvador to deliver aid and to evaluate the damage. After visiting the areas devastated by the earthquake and witnessing the deplorable conditions in which thousands of children and poor people live, we returned with our hearts broken, but determined to make a difference in building a better future. I just came back from El Salvador, and not even in the war times have I seen such a pain and frustration in the faces of the children underparrings and the level of destruction in my country. However, I don't know how, but with faith in God and in ourselves, the Salvadoran people get the necessary strength to overcome the difficulties and continue forward. I want to close by reading a message from a member of local destroyed church in San Agustin, one of the destroyed cities. The message was hanging on the left side of the convent. The message says, "We are devastated by the destruction of the earthquake that the earthquake has brought to our community, but we will be even more devastated if God abandon us in this difficult time. Oh Lord, please don't leave us. You are the only hope we have. Thank you, and I hope that you can continue supporting this process of reconstruction of El Salvador."
Good morning, councilmembers. I am Carlos Ardon, and I'm the executive director of ASOSAL. The support the city of Los Angeles can provide to rebuild the hundreds of villages that had been destroyed by the earthquake is the most valuable gift you can give to the Salvadoran community here in Los Angeles. Your support to request a temporary protective status from President George Bush can help the Salvadorans without documents to rebuild their own country is the most valuable gift you can give to Salvadorans in the United States. Thank you for all your support, and we hope we will continue working.
Once again, colleagues, thank you for your patience during this presentation. It's always difficult to give a presentation based on a tragedy, but I do appreciate the fact that we as a city are very cognizant of our communities here and have embraced not only the Salvadoran community, but all the other immigrant communities here in Los Angeles. So thank you for your support, and I'm sure, as Carlos and Carlos have said, they are very grateful for what we are doing, and the work is ahead of us. So I anticipate that all of you will step up and be helpful to our efforts. And I see Councilman Padilla has arisen.
You want to talk, then? Okay. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you. But this won't be my last time. I actually wanted to thank and recognize Nick especially, because although it was the motion that I introduced just after the earthquake that opened the door for assistance from the city of Los Angeles, it was Councilmember Pacheco who has done most of the work and has taken the lead on this and has traveled to El Salvador to see firsthand what is going on and how we can best be of assistance, because we want to be. You know, it was an obvious motion to introduce from a policy perspective, but a lot of people talk about, not only the United States, but especially Los Angeles, as being the reflection of the entire world. So yes, when there's an earthquake in El Salvador, we feel it here in Los Angeles. The aftershocks we feel are social, the aftershocks that we feel are economic, and the aftershocks that we feel are personal because of the large Salvadoran population in the city of Los Angeles, and a fast-growing one at that. So I thank and commend all of you for setting the stage, the beginning of what we need to do, and to count on my support, and I'm sure the entire city of Los Angeles' support, to do whatever we can. I also want to recognize the federal component, because that is also part of our responsibility to understand that part of what should happen, part of what justice we can achieve, we're going to need the help from the federal government about that. And President George Bush, in his inaugural address, asked every single one of us to serve our country by starting with our neighbor. Well, here in Los Angeles, a lot of our neighbors are Salvadorans, and we're trying to help our country and their country and serve our neighbors. And so we're going to expect his support, his administration's support, and Congress's support if we are to do the right thing.
Hal, before you move on, I just wanted to say one thing, a correction. Mr. Padilla is very accurate in the sense that we need to get federal support. The gentleman in the video was Robert Blumenfield, from our colleague and ally on this issue, Representative Howard Berman's office. Congressman Berman has been very supportive of the Salvadoran community. Mr. Blumenfield, ASOSAL, SALF have all been working very hard to get direct aid to the residents in El Salvador. One of the things that I will highlight is how ASOSAL and SALF have been able to deliver aid directly to the community in El Salvador, bypassing a lot of the bureaucracies in that country because of their relationships and their establishment of offices down there. And I believe, Mr. Burton, Mr. Hernandez would like to say something.
Mr. Hernandez, I recognize you.
Yeah. Mr. President, members of the council, one, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for basically picking up this baton and continuing to try and work with the Salvadoran community as part of Los Angeles and making sure that this growing community feels welcomed. But I wanted to point out something. When I met with SALF and ASOSAL, and we talked about this trip, and we talked about how we could coordinate efforts, I suggested, and they warmly welcomed, an invitation to Councilmember Ms. Kowski. And I extended that invitation on your behalf, and she's in the middle of a campaign, but also grant part, some other issues, and she could not attend. But it's important that all Angelinos and all of us as policymakers recognize that the Salvadoran community has chosen Los Angeles as their home. I, as a representative of Pico Union Westlake area, have gone to El Salvador on several occasions, but you need to know I was going to El Salvador before I was an elected office holder, during their crisis and negotiations for purposes of bringing peace. But it's a community that's expanding in Los Angeles. And unlike the Mexican-Mexican-American community, you need to understand that this community has chosen upfront to be active participants as citizens and go through the immediate process of trying to legitimize their existence here and become U.S. citizens. My son, who maybe doesn't want anybody to know this, his girlfriend is from San Miguel, El Salvador. She's 23 years old. And we get a chance to talk to her quite a bit. And the reality, it's part of our community, and it's an expanding community, and it's an active community, and it's a caring community, but it's definitely Los Angeles. And I just wanted to kind of say those words because this crisis is something that gives us an opportunity as a whole to work with that community, not only here, but there. And it has to go beyond just those of us who have a Spanish surname, because they're in all our districts. And I just want to point that out because I think they're trying to figure out how to do that. We're trying to figure out how to do that. And it's opportunities, sorry to say, that are crises like this that allow us to do that. So again, I wanted to recognize the efforts of the organizations representing that community, as well as Councilmember Pacheco and Padilla, for the roles that they are playing in regards to this crisis. And I quite frankly told them, you know, my days are numbered as an elected office holder, and this crisis is going to go beyond those days. And that's why I strongly suggested that they work with some of my other colleagues in trying to deal with this issue.
Mr. President, at this time to conclude, I would simply note that we have been extremely blessed today to not only have these individuals behind me present, but to actually have a captive audience from the Catholic Church understanding how El Salvador means our Savior. So I'm sure they have absorbed all the information, and we'll run back and talk to the Cardinal about how important this effort and this relief effort is to Los Angeles, not only the civilian community, but the religious and those of the Catholic faith. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you for your patience, and hopefully we'll get this moving forward quickly.
That concludes the public, the presentations. Do we have to have public comment? There's no public comment today because we don't have a quorum, and is there any other business that we need to adjourn? All items that are on today's agenda will be continued to Tuesday's agenda, and without objection, we are now adjourned. We have an adjourning motion, yes. Adjourning motions, please. Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I understand we're not technically in session right now, so for formality's sake, I would ask that the adjourning motions presented today be added to the minutes of the next council meeting. But I didn't want further time to go by without requesting that the council adjourn in memory of J.T. Cherry. I got to know J.T. as a member of the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners prior to my election to the city council, when J.T. as part of the building and safety staff was working in the commission office and making presentation after presentation in each and every meeting of the board, and had actually become the secretary of the commission prior to my departure. But in addition to his work, J.T. was just a great guy. One of the members of the city staff that if we could clone him, our city government would be much better, and our entire city would be much better. He died tragically in an automobile accident evening before last. He was only 46 years old, had many years ahead of life and of city service, and our thoughts and prayers go out to his wife and his family.
I'd like to be on that.
Mr.? Yeah, all members on that adjourning motion. But, Mr. President and colleagues, I especially wanted to speak of Mr. Cherry, because, as you know, very early in my tenure, we had that very difficult issue of El Mercado and the east side. And the department, building safeties, and all the individuals, especially Mr. Cherry, were very instrumental in helping my staff not only understand the issues, specifically the codes, but also how to work with the proprietor to make sure that he complied with them. And our success is built on that service that our city employees give us, so I do want to commend and recognize his work.
Mr. Wax?
Yes, I'd like the council to adjourn in the memory of Elna Green, affectionately known as Mother. She and her daughter, Sister Gloria Davis, were involved and started a number of meaningful programs for the homeless in our community, including the Valley Rescue Mission, the Compton AIDS Center, and the Watts Willerbrooke Center. And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, Mr. Members of the council, on behalf of David Hirsch of my staff, I've been asked that we adjourn today's meeting in the name of Audrey Jenkins, who was a close family friend of his family, particularly his mother, and she passed away on January 30th. She was a resident of Valley Glen, leaves her husband Sid, her children Carrie, Larry, and Steven, and their spouses Christine and Juan.
Any others? Council's adjourned. Thank you.